Good morning and welcome. We've got a big crowd in here today. I appreciate everybody for coming in. Before we start, I'd like to have a little bit of prayers to bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for the day. Thank you for allowing this board to discuss the needs of this county and agree on a course of direction that betters the lives of our citizens. As today is voting day in our country, I pray that all will get out and vote in their conscience for their desired leaders. I also pray that after the election, we as a country will find a way to work together for the future of our country and for all citizens. Finally, please protect those who protect us as they perform their jobs. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Before we say the pledge, let's remember why we say the pledge to this flag. As a lot of men and women have sacrificed a lot for us to have the freedom that we have in America and to go to the polls and choose our leadership. A lot of those men and women made the ultimate sacrifice. So let's remember why we say the pledge to this flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Has everybody had the opportunity to read the minutes? All right. Any corrections? If not, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
What's that move?
Motion on the floor. Any discussion? All is a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Mr. Tanyek, is there any adjustment to the agenda?
Yes, sir, there is. Good morning. Would like to add the resolution authorizing advertising of electronic auction by electronic means only for real and personal property. We add that to consent as item 10.
Okay. Any other adjustments from the commissioners? I'll accept the motion to accept the agenda as presented. Motion on the floor, any discussion? All is a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay. I guess it's time for us to come down. We've got a lot of people here today.
It sounded like one. It's an average.
No, no. It sounded like one. First thing you're not bringing, you don't treat that with the attitude you like.
All right, we're going to start our service pen commemoration with our 25-year recipient, Christopher C. Worth, from the Sheriff's Department.
Our 20-year recipient, Christopher S. Cowan, Information Technology.
We started at the other end.
Tell them it was in charge.
Our 15-year recipients. Our first one is Teresa Renee Figard, DSS and Child Support. Julian Nelms, Planning.
That's the reason Julia could not be here today. She's in hospital. So God keep her many prayers.
Thank you. Regina Gail Pearson, from the jail. James Brandon Foss, Sheriff's Department. Travis Sparks, Sheriff's Department. Next is our five-year recipient, Diana Campbell, Health and Maternity Care. Cynthia Harper, Jail. Kelly Barber, Emergency Medical Services. Nikita Mu born, DSS Child Support. That'll be our one-year coming up, correct? Kadim Anderson, Jail. These are our one-year, if I didn't say. Angela Artis, Facilities. Shanika Haley, Board of Elections. James Holland III, Sheriff. Caitlin Strickland, Health and Maternity Care. Destiny Heath, Non-Emergency Transport. Tammy Shrinker, DSS Administration.
Sheriff, why are you leaving? You've got some scary-looking ma'am.
She's got a serious look on her face.
They've got a serious look on them.
I need to see them.
Okay, okay. I'm about the rest of it as hot in there as me. Okay, next up, I'll thank Mr. James Wade, I know he grew up, and he'll give us an update on the Maxwell Center and all the good things that are happening out there. And I see you voted today.
I did, absolutely.
Very good.
All right, good morning, everybody. I'm just going to run through some stats and numbers, and then I do have a few pictures at the end to show you. But our bookings and everything at the facility have been good. They have been better than expected. Our event bookings, we go by something we call event days. The reason we do that is because it's misleading sometimes to say how many events you've had because an event may be three hours long, it may be three days long. So we go by event days. An event day is when there is someone in the building having an event, getting ready for an event, that is either a paid move-in or the actual event. If there are two events going on at the same time, they count as two event days, even though it's the same day. So in the month of July, we did 12 event days. In August, 23 event days. In September, we did nine event days that happened, and then we had seven reschedules and two cancellations. We'll talk about that in a minute. That was because of Florence. In October, we had 24 event days. In November, 15 event days. And in December, right now, we have, it says 21 when I did this for you last Thursday, but it's actually already jumped up to 24. And so bookings do constantly change. Since the beginning of the fiscal year, we have had 15,832 people since July 1st in the building for events. Our upcoming events that we have... Can you go back? Yeah, or that one's fine. I can go from there. Well, it's still skipping one. All right, well, we're just going to talk about it, even though it's not there. The upcoming events, it does change daily. For example, last Tuesday, we had someone call and they added an event for last Thursday. So we do accommodate anyone that we can accommodate. If we have the space, we've gotten calls as early as the day before. And so if we can do it, we absolutely do it. Sometimes there are events that will be booked, but then they end up not signing their contract for whatever reason. Yesterday, we had an event that was booked for November 26th or 29th, but their speaker is not available. So they had to cancel that event, and hopefully they'll reschedule it later. But some of our upcoming events, in January, we have ST Wooton coming. They're an engineering and construction conference. They are actually in the building eight different days throughout the month. We have the North Carolina Sweet Potato Conference coming for two days in January of 2019, 2020, and 2021. We have the Nelson Missionary Baptist Church in March for three days, the Chamber of Commerce Career and STEM Fair for three days in March. We have a state medical, emergency medical conference coming for three days in April. We have a state nurses conference coming for three days in April. We have a very large church from Wilmington that's coming for five days in April. And we have the North Carolina College of Theology coming for four days in June. So in addition to all of the one-off days that we get, weddings, receptions, all those various things, we are starting to get some conferences and conventions that are coming in for multiple days, which of course is good for our budget and our calendar. Hurricane, my staff makes fun of me because where I grew up, there is a city called Hurricane. And so apparently I pronounce it wrong for here, but Hurricane Florence came through. And when she did, we ended up having to reschedule seven events over the course of a couple weeks there. We were able to find other dates that would work for those particular events. We ended up having to cancel two. One was DSS staff meeting. They were a little busy in all the shelters and all of that good stuff. And then Word of Faith and Power Ministry had to cancel because they had a speaker coming in from out of state, and they just couldn't reschedule that speaker. And so we did give them refund on their contracted amount. We housed 180 Duke Energy linemen for a number of days, and for the most part, that went well. There was a little bit of damage, which Duke took care of, and so after a few thousand dollars, that was taken care of, and we're good there. For our revenue codes, for July through September, the rental of facilities, we are at 78.8% of what we budgeted for the year. After we add October in, that'll be about 83%, which was good. On the sale of beer and wine, this is showing that we are over budget. And after October, they're doing the October bookwork now, and Ann was telling me yesterday that when I first make deposits for alcohol, it all goes into the same account, and then we have a separate account for liquor, because we have to show that separately on our sales tax. And so on this, it looks like liquor is at 67 and beer and wine is at 27. Some of those numbers are not quite right.
The October in the gin package, that's July.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So yeah, some of the numbers slightly changed there, but I can tell you after October, the spirituous liquors will also be over 100% of budget. We've done much better with the alcohol events that we've had than what we would have thought. Also, at the end of the quarter, as far as just revenue, we have about $55,000, because any event that has not happened yet, when we sign the contract and get the deposits and/or the payments for the event, that money goes into an account that's considered a liability, and that money is not actually brought into our revenue until the end of the month that that event happens. And so we have about $55,000. In October, about 12,000 more of that will go toward revenue. And then we've also probably deposited about 12,000 more thousand in the last couple of weeks. So that's how we keep track of that. For the most part, those numbers are all good. The number that is not where I wish it were is the last one. I'm sorry. Somehow, it's missing from this one. Food and beverage direct sales is only at 8.46 of what we budgeted. That's where people come in and we sell them the soft drinks or the chips or cookies, whatever, for like a break during their meeting. We're not having a lot of people take us up on that. And so what we're doing is we're getting ready to start Pepsi tailgate promotion, where with a lot of the meetings and things, the break is built into our pricing so that if they're having a meeting, they'll have it, because a lot of people, when you talk to them about it, they're like, well, does it cost extra? So we've sort of rearranged things where it doesn't cost extra, and that will help us with those numbers on that. But that's going to be our tailgate.
The cost of the meeting went up.
Not necessarily went up. For the first year, we were giving some first-year discounts, and those are about to expire. So...
Sales, sales.
What's been happening? Just some things that... That is missing another slide. All right. The expenditures, salary and wages, extra help, 3.3% of budgeted. Part of the reason that is so low is we still are having issues hiring part-time people. We have hired one part-time person directly, otherwise we're still having to use temps. We continue to run ads, and it's just finding people who will, you know, actually show up to work and all that good stuff. Even with the temps, we go through new temps about every three weeks, because usually after their first day, they say is it... after their first day, they say, is it going to actually be this kind of work every day? And it's like, well, yeah, it's a labor job. It's setting up a room and tearing down a room. And so we've gone through a lot of temporary help. We have used 83.32% of what we budgeted for that. Part of the reason that we have used so much of that, though, is because we are so much busier than we expected. And so with being busier comes more cost for labor to turn over the rooms, and more cost for laundry, to do the laundry. Our laundry bills are outrageous. We have money that was approved to buy washer and dryer. The challenge is, the space for the washer and dryer, where we thought we were going to put it, the washer and dryer, commercial washer and dryer will not fit there. And so we're going to have to rearrange and move them to a different location, so they're going to be back where our storage area is currently. And as all of you know, they're working on getting us an upper level for storage, and when they do, part of that will become the space for the washer and dryer. So that's our challenge with getting that installed, is just having space right now for it to fit.
Must be timeframe, you know?
The last time I talked to Kendall last week, he said they were hoping to get the engineering plans and get it bid out, so that they can start construction maybe in January. And then our purchase of alcohol is a little over budget, and again, that's because we are also over budget on our income for alcohol, because we have sold more alcohol than we expected. The next slide that should be there is the catering status. Just to talk a little bit about catering, our clients are very happy with the way that our building works. When clients sign a contract, they're told upfront that there will be a 15% fee added on by the approved caterer, and that they must use one of our approved caterers. We currently have 28 approved contracted caterers. We have two caterers that don't want, well, one doesn't want to sign a contract with us, and it's like, well, that's the only way you can get on the list. We have a second one that signed with us and tried it, but they just don't have the staff, and so they have removed themselves from our list. And these are in addition to the 28. And then we had a 29th one that we removed from the list. And so we do sort of, you know, take pride in how they present the food, how they maintain the food, and all of that good stuff, so that our clients are happy. Because clients don't look at it as a caterer. Clients look at it as one big picture. Well, we ate at the Maxwell Center, and it was good or bad or whatever. And so we want the experience with the food to be good, so that they look at it as something that's good. We currently have about six caterers pending that have just applied in the last week to become approved caterers. And so we'll put them through the process. We require them to give us references, and show us all their paperwork, and show that they cook in a commercial kitchen and all that good stuff. So it can't be like a mom and pop just cooking in their kitchen at home and bringing it in. What's been happening, we were nominated for Convention South Magazine Readers' Choice Award. We did a Facebook post that had 4,600 interactions. We did end up winning the Convention South Readers' Choice Award. There were 2,000 people nominated, only 320 people actually won, and 20 of those winners were in the state of North Carolina, and we are one of the winners. So that is a nice thing for us, especially when it comes to the larger events that actually have meeting planners that are familiar with all of this stuff. That's a good thing. Our Facebook followers, we've grown to 2,718. At the beginning of the year, we were down around 12. And so that's been growing, and we just started working on our Instagram, and we're just under 1,000 followers on Instagram so far. We do have... Okay. This is not the right one. This is the PDF, I think, that I sent earlier. Okay. Well...
We got the right one. We got the right one.
The gin package.
No, well, you don't have the next part in the pictures. Here is a backup copy. If we can open that one. That's it. Right there, the one with the colorful. Yep. All right. All right. We do have a new art exhibit that was just put up. There is a reception tomorrow evening that is for the public, and I think I also sent all of you invitations from 6:00 until 8:00 p.m. It is the Wayne County Community Fine Art Students. Some of the paintings, drawings, sketches are pretty amazing, and so we would ask that anyone who can, please come and support them tomorrow night at that event. We strive to be a good community partner. Some of the things we've done, we've helped promote the North Carolina Poetry Festival. We helped with the United Ways Days of Giving, or Days of Action. We were a giving site and took donations that then went to children that have different challenges and need things to squeeze, to play with, to keep their attention, to help them concentrate. And so we got a box of stuff donated that we took down to the United Way. We've supplied promotional items for several groups, including the Clerks Conference, the Master Gardeners, the Rodri Golf Tournament. We try to advertise and market ourselves however we can. Christina Williams, my Director of Sales and Marketing, is on the Leadership Wayne Board of Regents. I am on the Junior Leadership Advisory Council, so we do try to be part of the community and do what we can. We had a Christmas special in July. We had 22 events that responded for that, and contracted events in December. Not all of them are actual Christmas parties, but the promotion is what made them give us a call. We've had a number of military events, including the 333rd Fighter Squadron graduation, the 334th Fighter Squadron graduation, the Military Ball, which was about 750 people. We also had the Senior NCO inductions. This is a picture from the Military Ball. Again, there were about 750 people there for the evening. They all had a good time. So far, the events that we've had, or the events that we have on the book, include all of these types of events. Ag meetings, religious gatherings, corporate trainings, business meetings, birthday celebrations, retirement parties, family reunions, school reunions, school activities, banquet, or boutique sales, wedding ceremonies, wedding receptions, holiday parties, award banquets, fundraisers, conferences, conventions, public shows, graduations, and recitals. We will have the first Wayne Community College December graduation on December 19th, and they're very excited about that. Interestingly, compared to most buildings, we've had more religious-type events than just about anything else, and that has surprised us a little, but that's a good thing. The UNC Breast Cancer Awareness Dinner was at our place. They had about 515 people at their event. It was very nice. We had a number of different weddings, including the Hattick Huber Wedding at our place. They had about 310 people. Norway Alumni was there with about 750 people. We had the Purple Heart that had about 400 people present. And we did the Wayne Pregnancy Center fundraiser, which was for 732 people. We are a very flexible space. Our competition maxes out at between 250 and 390. That would be Walnut Creek, Goldsboro Event Center. And so we can offer a space that is much bigger. And some of these events, the reason they moved to us is because they have outgrown those other places, and by moving to our place, it cost them slightly more, but they were able to make a lot more, especially on the fundraisers, because of the amount of space that we offer. And of course, you know, we do snacks or whatever someone needs from us, the setups that they need. We just had 1,500 fifth graders for their first symphony performance. The North Carolina Symphony was there. That went very well. The schools were happy. The symphony was very happy with the setup and how it went. And so things overall are just going well. We're, we even had a horse visit us, you know, it's an ag center, so. So people are taking it to the max. People have listened to what we've told them, and they've brought it to us. That's a good thing. We are finally fully staffed, which is a great thing. Most of my staff, I have to give them lots of credit. They do a really good job. They're salaried, and most of them definitely work more than 40 hours a week. And I appreciate everything that they do on behalf of the Maxwell Center. They do a great job. We are getting ready to start a new marketing thing, in addition to just take it to the max. Our place, our home, bring your event home. This sort of ties in with the county promotion of home also. Everyone out there belongs to some kind of society, group, you know, association. So we want people who live here to reach out to all the groups that they're in, and try to get them to bring their regional and state meetings here to Goldsboro, so bring it home, basically. Thanks for your time. Any questions?
Questions? Comments?
Well, I would comment, and you actually answered the question with a slide, because based just upon what I hear and what I know, the religious groups and alumni folk have been very welcome out there.
They have very, very much embraced us, and of course, you know, we try to embrace all of our clients and make them feel happy and at home, and I think a lot of events, especially the reunions and the religious events, have gone very well.
And to our county commissioners, I would like to just thank us and all of us, because what we've done is put a new public facility in Goldsboro that folk can feel like there's no historical exclusion. So this is, it's a very welcoming place to come up to.
Yes. We've had, I mean, just the variety of different types of events and different types of people in the building. We had one event where no one at the event spoke English. It was a Hispanic event, start to finish. And I mean, we have had a very wide, diverse amount of groups come in, and, you know, people have left happy, and that's our goal.
Thank you, James.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. I think we ran a little bit high, then we'll go ahead and move on to the row of cotton mills in the Southern Economy. And I think we've got Dr. Marty here to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board of Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about some upcoming public history programs that we're very excited about. One of the ways that the library seeks to strengthen community engagement is through the preservation of the cultural history of this place that we all call home. And this is important work, because generations that will follow us will be able to firmly establish their identity in this place called Wayne County. I have with me this morning Marty Cheddar, who is our local history librarian at the library, and those of you who know him know Marty is a master of capturing and preserving our local cultural history. Marty's gonna come up and talk to you about two programs that are up and coming, and these are part of the Duncan Public History Series. Marty?
Okay. Thank you so much for the opportunity. So as Donna mentioned, we do have two upcoming public history programs that are, will be very positive community events. The main, the main program is documenting the institutional memory of the Borden Manufacturing Company. Of course, the building's still standing. They haven't been used in 20 years or so, but they're still tangible reminders of Goldsboro's industrial past. One of the, there's actually one of the two buildings that are still standing, you know, at William and, and... Royal. Yeah, William and Royal, excuse me. William and Royal actually dates to 1892. There was another mill that had predated Borden. And so anyway, they're, they're still very important tangible reminders. The Borden Manufacturing Company was the kind of place where generations worked. You often had grandparents, parents, cousins, aunts, uncles, and people often worked 30, 40, sometimes 50 years. It was in an era when it was very labor-intensive, you know, but it provided a steady paycheck. You know, often, in the early 20th century, when you had a lot of small tenant farm families, if you had a major hurricane or inclement weather, I mean, you could lose your crop. And so this is the kind of place that provided stability, could offer stability. The other interesting thing is where the Cary Wenders Detention Center is now, that actually was the site of the Cotton Mill Hill. It was, it was a community housing. It was employee housing that was affordable through the mill owned it. And what came out of that was a real community, because a lot of these people had worked together for decades and stuff, and then their children played together. So the main part of our program, a big part of our program, will focus on the descendants of employees, and that are gonna reflect on going up, their parents', work ethic, like, and stuff like that. So we have two programs coming up. This Thursday's our first one. This gentleman, who's a professor emeritus from NC State University's College of Textiles, Dr. Gary Mock, he's gonna set the tone more of the role of cotton mills. You know, why they were important, how they, how they contributed to the Southern Economy. And Goldsboro could have one because of the advent of steam furnace, which was an important, there wasn't a direct water source to generate energy. So that's coming up this Thursday. That'll be at our, at the public library. And then last year, we did a similar program documenting an institutional memory of Dewey Brothers. But we had so many people show up, which is a great problem for history, that we actually moved it this year to the Community College at Moffett Auditorium, and that'll be the following Thursday, Thursday, November 15th. And it's gonna heavily revolve around the actually descendants of employees, employees that worked there. And everyone that comes, it's gonna be really about an hour program. We have these beautiful exhibit panels. We have some really, it's gonna open up with a really neat video that has drone footage inside and out that was taken. And then everyone who comes will get a free t-shirt. So, the, on the back of the letter, on the back is a letterhead. It's an image from a letterhead we found from 1910, so, of the buildings. But please come. It's gonna be a really, really positive community event. Thank you.
Any questions before he gets going?
No questions, one comment. They do a fantastic job on history, and he's a history nut. You can dress it up any way you want to, but he's a history nut, is what he is.
He actually has something that he found, it's about my family, and I need to get together with him. I'd like to read that again. My father had a copy of it, but after his death, I never could find it again. It's have a paste in it, it might right near Wayne County.
Mr. Chairman, I second that. He's really good at what he does. He probably knows history of Wayne County more than probably anybody in the county, for that matter. Does a fantastic job. They have services there at the library that a lot of the public don't know about. You really need to go down and talk to Marty. If you want to know anything at all about your past or Wayne County history, that's the place to go. Do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. I failed to mention, I gave Christie a copy of this card, which she will give to you, and it has a list of our programs on the back. And I should have said, the library received an LSTA grant to deliver this program. That is a Library Services and Technology Act grant that's available through our state library. Those are federal dollars that flow through your state library. So we're grateful for that grant, and also the Borden family who provided the money for the t-shirts.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, moving on, trying to get caught up. We talked about, small business came here before, and it generated so many questions, we asked them to return and come on up and please make your presentation. You know, we got a little bit more time to ask questions this time.
Thank you, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. I'm actually Sharad Shuler with Small Business Administration. Last time you guys had the opportunity to hear from my coworker...
I'm sure you'll be just as good.
Yes, Corey Williams. So today, I don't want, you know, want to go too far, but I want to just give you a brief overview of what we do. Of course, we are here to help with the long-term recovery with those that have been impacted by the hurricane, which is Hurricane Florence. So we're here as the Small Business Administration. We provide those long-term recovery funds with, in the amount of lending, for low-interest-rate loans for both all businesses of all sizes, nonprofit organizations, homeowners, and renters. For our businesses, the rates, again, is as low as 3.675. For our nonprofit organizations that have been impacted, the rate is as low as 2.5%. And for homeowners and renters that may have suffered any damage during Hurricane Florence, the rate is low as 2%. So we just want to emphasize that. Of course, there's multiple ways... Of course, there's multiple ways that you can apply for our loans. We first encourage you to register with FEMA, which we do have FEMA here today who will speak briefly. But when you register with FEMA, we do have a three, a process of going online to apply at sba.gov or sba.gov. Or you can apply at the center that we have located here in Wayne County at the TC Collier Building or Center, which is the former WA Foster Building, is that correct? Just wanted to make sure we're on the same page. But they are available to the residents and the, and the business owners here, Monday through Wednesday, from nine to six. So we want to make sure that that is, we've been messaging it out as much as possible, but we want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. So with that being said, we also have the phone number they can apply by online as well. But I wanted to just give a quick update on the program. Of course, we have the location that we mentioned. Our deadline has changed, so the last time Corey Williams was here, the deadline for applications was November thirteenth. That time has been extended to December thirteenth. So we want to make sure that everyone is aware that that extension has been extended. Also, for our businesses that suffer, and I didn't mention it earlier, I'm sure Corey mentioned it before, but economic injury or working capital loans that we provide for people who were impacted in their business stall, that deadline has been set for June fourteenth. So if any businesses that may have been stalled during that time, we want to make sure that they are aware that they can apply for that loan. And whether we have the location here or if we're still here, they can still go to online or partner with one of our local SBA offices. Also, with that being said, another update is approved loans in North Carolina, we've had two hundred and fifty-eight million one hundred and four hundred loans that have been approved over the state. So of course, there was a lot of damage more on the coastal. In Wayne County, we have approved two million one hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred, so want to make you aware of what we've approved. You know, obviously, that's not as big as the big number, which is good, we're glad that Wayne County was not impacted as heavily as some of the coastal counties, but we're still here to assist those that have been impacted in some shape or form. So with that being said, is, I hope I covered just the basics, again, you guys are aware of the program, but if there's any questions at this point.
Questions?
We asked them all last time.
You did. I don't know if it was shared, I just want to make sure, I don't know if it was shared last time, I'm not sure of the timing per se. But those that were impacted by Matthew, there may be some questions of people who have taken out SBA loans the last time, you know, for Matthew. Just want to let them know that there, there's available to them a nine-month deferment. Of course, we're not going to contact them directly, they would have to reach out to Small Business Administration, but we want to make people aware, even if they didn't apply for a loan this round, but they may have had to use funds to just kind of prepare for whatever happened during Florence, they have the option to defer any loan payments during this time for nine, up to nine months. So just want to make sure anyone who took out a loan during Matthew, that that's available to them as well.
Okay. Well, I'm surprised this, this board generally never gives out a question, so, but last time Corey only had four minutes, so that was the reason why we asked.
If you had for some reason, some damage during that timeframe, and Matthew was two years ago, October the ninth, I believe, and those damages were during that time, they, we were expecting that all that damage would, you'd have approved it, it was related to Matthew or one of the storms to get the interest, get the loan, that interest rate you're talking about?
The interest rate I am referring to is specifically for Hurricane Florence. So it is not related to Matthew per se, but if any damage that occurred or any type of damage occurred during the Florence, they would be eligible, anyone's eligible for loans based upon this current declaration.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to reiterate, I think I asked a question before.
Okay.
But for the public, the, the SBA loan is also participated by bank. SBA and the bank on these loans, is that correct?
Actually, let me clarify. Normally, SBA loans, we guarantee loans, you know, business loans throughout the year for any business that goes to a bank, we would guarantee that loan normally, that's the normal practice of SBA and we guarantee, we back it up. And that's where the, they would go to the banks. In this case, for the disaster loan, it's specifically through SBA. We do the lending and that lending is actually taxpayers' money. So we, you know, you're coming to us, the servicing, everything is coming straight from SBA.
So direct, the direct contact with SBA.
The servicing, direct, everything, no closing costs. And then, I don't know if it was mentioned before, if you do take out a loan, the payments for the first payment is delayed up to twelve months. So that's another thing, so you can concentrate on the repair portion of your, whatever's happened during the storm.
Okay.
Thank you for, good question.
I was just going to ask.
Yes.
Can you tell the public what the farmers and the agriculture community can get from your program?
They're, from, yeah, they're not necessarily eligible through SBA, you know, there is, there's resources out there and we have to direct them towards the agriculture for assistance. SBA would only assist through businesses unless in, in some shape or form it was directed, if they have a business that was run, but the agriculture, there are loans and there's assistance out there for them, but they would have to refer to the agriculture.
Excuse me, Kevin Johnson, Department of Agriculture, has got a meeting at eight-thirty tomorrow specifically for that matter to Maxwell Center.
Right. That's why I asked the question.
No, that's why, okay. I'm, I'm probably going to go because I'm interested to, thank you, go ahead. Anybody else?
There are any?
Thanks, we appreciate you coming back.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Like I say, we are running behind, but we'll go ahead and move into public comments, since y'all will get that ready. You have four minutes, if you'll come up, give your name, your address and your phone number, and it's wide open. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Oh.
Commissions.
My name is Ronny Pettis Senior and I live at three twelve Brentwood Drive, Dudley, North Carolina, two eight three three three. My cell phone number, if you care to have that.
Maybe that piece spices.
Nine one nine two seven three eight eight three five. The Wayne County Board of Commissioners, we are asking you to please give us a air. And we desperately need for you to hear what's going on. I would really appreciate you allowing me to speak with you about a blue line ditch between Brentwood Drive and Potts Road. A ditch that has caused so much loss of money, heartbreak and family disperse, displacement by the flood from Hurricane Floyd, Matthew and Florence in the past few years. We're desperate for some help. There have been several people that were willing to help with the cleaning of the ditch, but we have lost so many homeowners to the rental property in recent years. With the help of doing that time, we were able to pull mattresses, box springs, storm doors, I use the word storm door here, but we, it was two storm doors, cement blocks, shingles, household garbage that was left in the ditch. So we are up again with the same problem and we are asking someone to give us some help. When Hurricane Matthew was, and Florence came, I worked on cleaning the ditch inside of, I worked on cleaning the inside of the ditch where logs had fallen, plus there were household debris blown by the wind or lifted on the floodwaters. I also cut down large trees inside and, inside and on the banks of the ditch. I worked over five, that is, five weeks doing January and February myself, trying to clear these debris out, cut the ditches, cut the ditches to separate things inside, which is the siblings, cut the trees, stacked the logs, the shortcuts, and we did whatever we could do. That is, I had some help there to see that I didn't have no dead fall, such as limb falling out of the tree, because I could not do it by myself. I wanted somebody there. And I worked over five weeks and I said again, I was told by my, kidney doctor, do not pick up more than thirty pounds, that means do not use my chainsaw anymore. I'm seventy-four years old as of right today, and this is not my birthday, but it was in August. My health is not good and my wife is staying in, my wife and I are staying in the hotel and we plan out dearly to stay there. We have not had any help from FEMA, we're trying to do whatever we can. And we thought that we would have some help with the ditch during Matthew, but we're doing the same thing over again and we do not have any help. We ask that please, not just for my wife and I, but for the other people that's there, please give us some help, some way or another.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I thank Mr. Komati for his looking out for us and coming by to look at some of the things that we are doing. And they are doing some work on Rolling Wood Drive now by digging out the high ditches because we need them, Poplar Creek Ditch dug. Thank you.
I can't imagine if we could have somebody from like maybe planning to take a look at that and see what their alternatives are. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to introduce myself to you. My name is Betty Redwansky and I'm with FEMA Intergovernmental Affairs. And Intergovernmental Affairs is a point of contact for local officials and we provide disaster updates and information. And one of the things I would like to share with you is, as my partner from the Small Business Administration mentioned, the SBA loan application deadline has been extended. The FEMA registration deadline has also been extended to December thirteenth. So that's for homeowners, renters and businesses that suffered loss or damage from Hurricane Florence. And so it's been extended until December thirteenth. Also, once people have applied for assistance, which they can do by calling one eight hundred six two one FEMA, that's one eight hundred six two one three three six two, they can also apply online at www dot disasterassistance dot gov. And they can also download the FEMA mobile app. Once they've applied, if they have any questions about their application, that number that they registered at can also function as a helpline. So there's help available for people throughout the entire process. If people would like to have face-to-face assistance, there's a disaster recovery center open at five sixteen South Leslie Street at the TC Colley Building. And that's Monday through Wednesday, nine AM to six PM. Packets, I believe you may have packets that, what's, my contact information is in here if you have any questions. I also would like to add you to our distribution list for future disaster updates if you'd be interested. There's information in here on the individual assistance program, the mitigations program and the public assistance program. And I also want to thank our, our partners with the County Emergency Management and all the work they've done responding to Hurricane Florence. Thank you very much for your time and do you have any questions?
I was going to say, if you just send that updates through our PIO office, public information, and they'll disseminate it out to us.
Okay.
We should, we are getting them now, we've had about a week ago.
Oh, okay.
We are getting them now, but we, we've not.
I was thinking I was getting a lot of updates anyway.
Right, we'll, we'll make sure that they are forwarded back through PIO as well.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I just had a comment to make. Hopefully, we learned something from Matthew in our processing. Hopefully, there's been some changes made to where this go-around with Florence, hopefully it wouldn't take, it's not going to take twenty-four months in some cases for the, the funding that gets to the source. I know it may not have a lot to do with FEMA, it could be the state, but the key is, all of us have to work together to shorten this time. But we're still got some, some people from Matthew here in Wayne County that are just getting funding, which has finally started, but twenty-four months, hey, let's face it, folks, that's way too long. And whatever we can do, whatever FEMA can do, whatever us as elected official can do to try to shorten that span, we should learn from every disaster to make it more efficient. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Are you referring to the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program?
Yes.
That's a partnership with FEMA and the state, it's FEMA-funded, state-administered.
Right.
However, I have heard that the intent, this go-around is to make it much quicker.
Yeah, well, I'm not blaming anyone, what I'm saying is, is that all of us should learn something here, that where it doesn't take twenty-four months for citizens have to wait for disaster relief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And this might be a question that the county manager will have to help. Now, ma'am, I want to ask you, you are strictly FEMA with the federal government.
Correct.
No relationship to anything that David Harris is doing?
Again, it's as you said, the funding is through FEMA, but is administered by the state.
And then, therefore, does, the opportunity for, qualify for FEMA help, is that related to any, any dollar, a dollar related to any ability of the owner themselves to do, or is that open to everyone? Is that, is it income-based or is it open to anyone?
There's a yes and no answer to that. Our individual assistance programs for homeowners, renters and businesses are open to everyone. Everyone can apply for them and see if they're eligible. Our individual assistance programs for homeowners and renters, depending on what your loss and damage is, could be a mixture of either grants or loans from the Small Business Administration. So some of the programs, the grant programs for home repair, they're not, they're not dependent on applying for a Small Business Administration loan. And some of our programs for personal property replacement, we ask people to apply for a Small Business Administration loan. If they are declined for a loan, then they may be referred to a grant program. So it's a, it's a bit of a mixture.
So if you're, if you have, if it's a business relationship, say, dealing with rental property, does it have anything to do with the income of the person who's renting the property, whether or not you get access to the FEMA funds or not?
Okay, if you're the owner of the property, well, then, the assistance that would be available would be a loan from the Small Business Administration.
Where does the grants, where does the grants come in at?
Okay, let's say I'm a resident of the property, I live there and I'm a renter and my personal property was damaged.
The rental's pers, the renter's personal property?
Right, right.
Not the owner's?
Like my clothes?
Not the owner's property.
Right, exactly. Then I may be eligible for disaster assistance. There's also a possibility I might be eligible for money to rent someplace else to live while the current place I'm living at is being repaired. Everything's.
So the owner is shut out?
Pardon me?
The owner is shut out, the renter themselves make. The renter themselves may qualify, but the owner of the property is shut out, eliminated.
Well, the owner would be considered a business.
And?
And so businesses, what, the disaster assistance that's available to them, it are loan, the low interest loans from the Small Business Administration.
Grants for businesses.
Thank you.
I've been accused sometimes of just voicing and just seeing things that maybe I shouldn't, but let me say this from a different perspective. Your program fails miserably. And I hope you can go back and tell whoever at FEMA that waiting 24 months, or in some cases 30 months, to have uh, some assistance when you're flooded out of your home, you no longer have a home. So you've gotta pay mortgage payments on that home that's flooded as well as going out and getting another home to live in or moving into a motel. There's a gentleman right behind you that's shaking his head. I mean, it fails.
It failed him.
So my statement to you is that you need to come up with a different model. Going through the layers of bureaucracy and adding layers to bureaucracy doesn't help this matter. You would be much better off if you would reach out to your counties and let those dollars flow to the counties so that our planning department can in fact get those dollars to where they're needed a lot, lot faster. I, I've talked to a number of families that are devastated from the floods that we've had and they are looking to government to assist them. To have assistance to wait that long is a failure. I'm sorry. I don't know how you could classify it any other way. So I'm hoping that maybe you would go back in your meetings with your FEMA representatives and tell them that we've got to come up with a different way to run this railroad. It is a failure. So I'm glad to see you here today. I hope you don't take offense to my comments, but we've got to find a better way of doing it. Thank you very much.
And, and just to add on just a little bit, the FEMA program, because of the way it's structured, you say that you can provide some assistance to the renter. The investment of the, the investment of the property owners, whenever you're caught between what the federal government won't do because of regulations and the slipshod way that insurance companies will deal with you, the property owners are caught out there in no man's land. No one, there's no help from anyone. And uh, I, I take personal resentment to the fact that we have folk coming here with programs and for the average person that I've come in contact with, it's either too long or useless. So it's nice to hear presentation, but, and this is, you know, it's not the right, because it's not your program. You represent the great American system, but it's not working.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. I just have one other thing. I want to see if you would verify this, what I've heard. Uh, and, and I won't tell you what answer is until I hear yours. By the time, by the time a person, citizen fills out the FEMA request for assistance, do the application, by the time they fill it out, it goes to the proper channels to even get looked at, maybe approved or disapproved. How long is that process on a normal basis?
Okay. Are we talking about the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, the acquisitions? Are we talking about my home was flooded and I call and I registered with FEMA?
Florence, for example. What are people doing with Florence right now? By the time they fill out their application for FEMA, what is the average time it takes for them to hear back from FEMA?
Okay. Um, they should be hearing back from an inspector within 10 days, depending on what their loss is.
About approved or disapproved though, their application?
Well, the, the process is you apply. If there was damage to your home, um, an inspector will be contacting you within 10 days to inspect the property and then, then it works its way through. Um, and then FEMA will either email you or mail you a determination letter that tells you what programs you're eligible for or not. Now, throughout that entire process, if anyone has any questions or they think it's taking too long, they just can call the 1-800 number, 1-800-621-FEMA, which is a helpline and ask them, where am I in that process? Um, it's the same as visiting the Disaster Recovery Center. They can look them up right there on the computer and see where they are. Um, from soup to nuts, from beginning to end, I can't give you uh, an answer because everything is handled on a case-by-case basis.
Well, how about, how about this? How about, uh, I've heard from a lot of citizens and some elected officials, even some FEMA people behind the scenes, how about six to nine months? Does that sound reasonable?
No.
Well, that's what we experienced during Matthew here in Wayne County in certain cases. My point is, is that, is that if that's the case, that's totally unacceptable just to get your application processed, whether you are eligible or not. Then you've got to go through all the stuff to get repairs done, whatever it takes to go through, and that's why it's taken 24 months. And we still have people that are finally getting some help from Matthew. So I'm, I'm saying that FEMA, HUD, everyone needs to look at how long it's taken these applications to get through. As Commissioner Daughery said, this bureaucracy that we have created, we need to, we need to go back to simplified common sense. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Uh, before you, before, before we close this.
We beat her up.
Well, well, before we close this.
Y'all have four minutes left.
The gentleman, the gentleman spoke earlier. I, I, I wish before you leave, you would have him, let him give you a timeline on how it's impacted them. I would, uh, Mr. Petty, I wouldn't mind if you would see him and let him give you a personal discussion on the impact for him. I think that'll answer, that'll, that'll clear all that concern we have with you. Based upon what I know about his situation, if you just talk with him and.
We really do want you to come back someday. But we are really frustrated, you know, so are our citizens. You gotta understand that as well.
Yeah. And, and we are, and we are trying to make it as easy as possible for everyone and we are trying to make sure that people get what we can give them within the law. Um, so, but thank you for sharing your concerns and your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Well, we're short of public comments. Is there anyone else? Come on up. Name address, phone number.
When I was growing up, my father taught us one line of lessons. Life isn't fair. One of the things that he taught us was, an apology delayed is an offense compounded. The last time I was before you, I gave a comparison as to the amount of time it took you to get me a copy of your fireworks policy as to how often my wife cooks lasagna. The comparison was uh, wrong. I said it was two years. It was actually 15 months. And I wrote each of you a letter apologizing. And I said in that letter that I would be at the next meeting to apologize in person. Uh, because of what I do, I have a hearing loss. I was watching the monitor and Mr. Chairman, you called for public forum. I didn't hear it, so I did not offer that apology at that meeting. I would like to do that now. I apologize for the incorrect timeframe, but it was 15 months. And for me, that's a little long. And anyway, the memo that I received in four days after that, which was appropriate time, and you got this letter in two days, and what I wanted to convey to you was, I signed the letter, dumb son of a tenant farmer and Wayne County resident and taxpayer. Uh, I'm entitled to that information. It should be given freely. But in the memo that was sent to me, I had to follow that, required by state law that I get your permission before I shoot a fireworks display. I have always tried to do that. But I was told that I needed to give you a certificate of registration. Didn't know what it was. So once again, I go to the Director of Inspections, he doesn't know. I go to the clerk, she doesn't know, so we're in limbo again. But forget it. The issue is, I recently made a request for public records of everybody who shot fireworks for the 4th of July. Guess what I got? Nothing. Nobody is submitting the paperwork that you require, except me. Mount Olive didn't do it. Paco didn't do it. Seven Springs didn't do it. Seymour Johnson didn't do it. Berkeley Mall didn't do it. Now, I take issue when I, when you have a law that applies only to me. That is wrong. I'm donating a fireworks display to your region. You consented to let me do it. I appreciate it. But it's not right that you charged me a fee and my competitors don't have to pay it, don't have to submit the paperwork. It's wrong.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Is anyone else? Okay. We'll close it out. Mr. Chairman, cut the unfinished business. You want to talk about that later?
I, I can do it now if you would like.
That'd be fine.
Um, as the board's aware, the Facilities Committee recently met and part of the discussion of the Facilities Committee was our OES building. Uh, as you're also aware, the preliminary cost of that was way over what we had budgeted for. And we went out to seek a 911 grant to help us fund this facility. It was part of being the backup PSAP for Duplin County that allowed us to apply for this grant and we did receive it. And the amount total on that is 1.5 million dollars. So add that to the 4 million dollars that we have already budgeted for, I think it was a couple of years ago, maybe been three years at this point. Uh, we have about 5.1 billion dollars as far as a budget for the OES 911 facility. In looking at what we did with the Facilities Committee, we had to cut back office space to make sure that we met the budget and we were not looking at large additional costs. We had to cut back office space from EMS, also the OES staff and fire marshal staff to really focus in on the 911 center, but also to focus in on an emergency operations center. So with that being said, the Facilities Committee met with our architect, Jim Stumbo, and the recommendation for that Facilities Committee was that we were to go back, cut down the building size with those additional offices to really focus on an emergency operations center and also the 911 center and the supporting facilities to support that operation. We also looked at the possibility of if we were to add on at a later date, maybe some additional offices on that campus that would include uh, emergency operations or uh, OE, or EMS, or whoever we decide, that we would design that into the new building. So with that being said, it really changes the scope of what we originally approved by the board, but we have asked our architect to go back and, and really narrow down the scope to stay within that 5.1 billion dollar budget. And Mr. Chair of the Facilities, if you'd like to say.
Good, good explanation.
Okay. Uh, but since it was such a big change, we did feel like that needed to have board approval. Uh, we will ask our architect to come back really as soon as possible. We're hoping by our next meeting, uh, we've updated plans so that we can get this project out to bid and moving forward on it.
Wayne, are you John, you going to get anything?
Well, I just, we did have a good facilities meeting. Uh, I, I think we cleared up some, some thoughts on what needed to be in the 911 center. We were probably dreaming a little bit big to start with, but uh, I think what we've come up with, for the time being, we make it work because our primary objective is, you know, the 911 center, uh, 24/7 is the heartbeat of Wayne County. I mean, it controls everything, law enforcement, fire, EMS. I mean, uh, every, just about every department of the county funnels through the 911 center and it is the heartbeat of Wayne County. Uh, the EOC, when we have a disaster, that's the heartbeat is, that with a combination of 911 center is the heartbeat of the county. Uh, but that room needs to be fortified, just like the 911 center, because if it's not, it's really gonna be useless during the time of a hurricane or a natural disaster. And that, that part of the facility can certainly be used for other things. But uh, I'm, I feel pretty confident we can come up with, with something that will meet our 911 needs and, you know, and not only just the 911 actual center where the, where the call takers are, but it, it still will have enough offices and, and spaces that are needed, uh, that will be in the wind resistance category to, to meet the needs of Wayne County. And I want to thank the uh, Builder Committee or the Facilities Committee for letting them down and get this ironed out and uh, as you say, we can, it can, it can always be added on to. Thank y'all.
You got anything, John?
No, I won't uh, say anything, but I agree with what we discussed at the Facility Committee. I think they explained it pretty well. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to remind you, the main call center part, what's the wind rating on that?
Seventy.
Refresh my memory if you want.
150.
Well, it's actually, it's gonna have to be now to whatever the code is of the state. So it's whatever the state's requiring. I don't know what that would be.
We have some, we have some.
What was it, ma'am? We had it at 150.
Is that 150? But we have to go back if we want to use current money and we'll find out in the state what their requirements are.
Okay.
So it's got to be more than 150, right? Okay. Thank you.
All right. I entertain a motion to approve this as presented by the county manager.
So move it.
All right. Motion on the floors, any discussion? I was a favor, please raise your right hand. And um, I've been informed that we need to take a break.
Okay. Yep.
Take a break. Yeah, wait, wait, wait. All right.
You all received the regular reports that you typically receive that has your detailed of the different um, changes in cash and revenues in the different funds, but um, this is such exciting stuff, I wanted to add a little color to the presentation, so I decided to zero in on a few things that I feel like y'all are usually interested in. Um, but if you have any questions on the full report, I certainly have that information with me. I just hit what I thought would be the highlights, so. And I don't have a clicker, so can y'all? The mouse?
That's time I'll pay for it.
Okay, here we go. Thank you. All right. So first thing I'm gonna talk about is the property tax revenues and um, of course, we're still early in the year, so timing is everything when it comes to our property tax revenues. We have not collected a bulk of those yet. And as of the date that I submitted this presentation, we were behind compared to last year by $334,000. But the good news is I checked it this morning and now we're ahead by $400,000. So that's why I say the timing can really vary. Um, you have some large taxpayers that if they get it in before September, it's in these numbers. If they don't, then you see it in October and November. So January, February is where we would typically look to really compare um, So January, February is where we would typically look to really compare, but everything seems to be in line with what we would expect to see around this time of year with our property taxes. The vehicle taxes are actually a little above last year as well, which is good news. I think last year, when I updated you on these, we had experienced a decrease in the vehicle tax revenues, and that was unusual because the tax and tag program had really increased our collection percentages up to about, I think, 98, 99%. And some people were finding loopholes in that program, and I think that the, I think like Allen's group, the Tax Ministers Department of Revenue are getting together on that to try to minimize those loopholes so that we don't lose that revenue. But the good thing is, we, it is increased by, over this time last year. So that's good news. Slightly ahead of budgeted projections at this point, too. Moving on to sales tax, I keep forgetting the mouse is down here. Moving on to sales tax, very good news. As you know, the past few times I've reported to you, it has been decreased over the prior year, and we are now seeing that trend change. So we are actually $614,000 above where we were last year. And as you all remember, we budgeted flat this year because we were not seeing that growth that we had anticipated seeing last year. So this is really good news for us. I checked our last, the one that's not included in this, I checked our October collections, and it was above last year as well. So that would be three months straight that we've seen. So I'm hoping that that is a trend we're going to continue to see. And this is just the chart that I've been preparing for you all, all along, that shows you like the last 18 months' worth of data in sales taxes. Are there any questions on this chart or on this page? Okay. And then the next page, I selected some capital projects that you all might want an update on, and the first one being street assessments. As you all know, that is completed at this point, and Andrew has been bringing that information up here for the resolutions for y'all to vote on and us to be able to bill those out. We did do that, and we did receive several that paid those assessments in full. We've had some that sold during the process, and so Andrew and Ann back in our office has really been working with those people to try to figure out how that works with their installment plan, because in some cases, the seller might have paid half of those costs upfront. So just working through some of those things that are a little bit different, but everyone else is on the installment plan for the one tenth, over 10 years. And then next year, they will be billed through the tax system. So we, we hope that'll be a little bit easier. This year was our first time, and finance had to manually bill those out, so we had some stuff to work through, but I think it's all working pretty well. Yes, sir. Sure.
Have we already, we borrowed the monies for that through a bond?
That's correct.
Part of the bond. So we already had the monies on hand. Okay.
That's correct. For the Maxwell Center, I won't repeat a lot of the information that you heard today from James, but the actual capital project, approximately 97% of what we budgeted has been spent at this point. There are a few things that are outstanding right now, so we'll, we'll give you another update at the next quarter. For the Grantham Sewer, I believe you all received an email from Kendall Lee, our Facilities Director, that that is operational now, and approximately 69% of what was budgeted had been spent as of the end of the quarter. So I would expect that project to start wrapping up here pretty soon after seeing his email. For Meadow Lane and Edgewood, the approximately 61% of what's been budgeted has been spent, and that did not include the budget amendment that was presented to you today, so that will not change because that budget amendment was pulled. So once we, we get the go-ahead, then we'll let you know what those updated numbers are.
Same question.
Sure.
On the projects for the schools, we budgeted a certain amount of dollars.
Yes, sir.
If in fact, there was any cost savings on that, would we, would that flow to, back to the fund, or could they just use that? In other words, if you budgeted $18 million and they found some savings in there, could they just use those, you know, up to the 18 million?
Not if it's the bond money. So the bond monies, we have to be very careful about, about how we use that, because there was, you know, collateral involved and things like that with the, with the way this thing was structured. So my understanding is, with the bond monies, you may be able to use it on, like if there was another school project within that bond issuance, you might be able to use it that way. The only other option would be able to use that savings towards their debt service payments. And that is my understanding. Is that yours, too?
To give you something to, to work on, you know, as if you hadn't got enough. I rode by there, I want to say about a month ago, and all of a sudden, I saw this huge, I'm talking about a huge generator. I'm talking about the size of this room that was being offloaded and put in place. And I just wanted to know whether or not that generator was in the original scope of work.
What was it, last name, John?
Because I'm telling you, it is a huge generator. I don't know of any other school in the entire city, I mean, the county, that would have that type of generator.
One year ago, didn't it?
And if so, I want to know why it was included in it.
Is that because maybe it's going to be used as a shelter in the future? Craig?
I don't know that there's ever been a need to do that.
I haven't heard anything.
If, if there is, I, I'm unaware of, my, my, if I'm guessing, since Edgewood was supposed to be for the, you know, special needs, that that was the purpose, and that's a guess, but, but we will check.
Well, and if in fact, Edgewood is not part of it, now, now we got a problem, but it ain't right, because we can't check on that.
Well, the Commissioners gave the Board of Education basically a power of attorney to act in your stead, so you were not approving this specific contract. They were.
Well. That's another mistake we made there. Going forward, we may have to look at that. Anyway, I'm sorry, let's go ahead.
One, one backup a little way.
Sure.
Edgewood, as, let's stay with Edgewood just a minute. If we didn't, if all the money wasn't spent that was budgeted at Edgewood, did I understand you to say, as long as it was a school project, it could be used by the school system to finish other projects at other sites?
I think as long as it was a school project that was financed by the limited obligation bond. So there were only, I believe there were three projects from the schools that were financed with the limited obligation bond. So I believe that those monies could be possibly reassigned to one of those projects, but not any school project. There was the HVAC project for the schools and the Southern Wayne.
That's what I.
And then Meadow Lane.
That's what I want to hear, because if I hear you right, it's under that umbrella. Southern Wayne and Mid, and Southern Wayne and Edge, Southern Wayne and Meadow Lane is under that same umbrella.
Right. And, and that's my understanding. I would certainly want clarification from that. I'm sure Boarden would, too, from our bond attorney, but that is my understanding in the past, when, when we've had these types of funds.
I just wanted all of us to hear the same thing, that under the broader umbrella of funding, that the dollar saved at Meadow Lane could be used someplace else, in the event it was needed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I need to ask the manager a question.
Yes, sir.
Now, when we discussed this, the Meadow Lane School with the superintendent and his staff, the consideration that we voted on was to have something to do with the kind of lines, it had something to do with Edgewood and all that kind of stuff. Now, we're building all these classrooms over there to accommodate Edgewood and all these other factors. Now that they're talking about not putting Edgewood over there, I mean, why are we building all these classrooms over there if, if that's not the case? I know you can't answer that.
Very good question. I, I think we do have to get some clarification from the school system about especially what Edgewood is and what Edgewood will not be, and about the line discussion of Meadow Lane, because that was the purpose of funding those additional classrooms, was the small classroom size. And, and we were told at the time, if you build this, we will, you know, it may be, and I think we have been told, they can't adjust school lines until the next school year. So since it should be open, they should have a plan that is ready to adjust school lines for the next school year, for the 19, 20 year.
Well, I want to follow up on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't see you behind me, dog. I'm sorry. I was looking to my right. I was looking to my right and listening to.
I think back three years. Evidently, this has changed as far as what's going under the limited obligation bond and whatnot, but I remember three years ago, when we approved the classrooms in northern border Wayne County, we approved the HVAC renewal for, for the city schools and Southern Wayne. All that was already funded at the time that we approved it. What happened? Why did it go under the limited obligation bond?
The, the, I believe what you're, what you might be referring to is the 4.6 million for Fremont Stars. That is cash in the, on the, in the bank that we have, that, that the Commissioners had decided at that time that that money would be set aside for those purposes. That was the only cash-funded project at that time that I was aware of, that I think we had discussed. The remaining projects, the HVAC projects, the Southern Wayne project and Meadow Lane would all be financed through limited obligation bonds.
That was my misunderstanding. Okay. I knew, I thought one of them was, was funded.
Right.
All right. Well, they're saying that even, even those classrooms aren't funded now, right? In northern Wayne County? Shut up, Ray.
Well, I have a question. I have a question, going to John's question, because I was looking for the, I think, the verb tense, past, present, and future, or started, working on, or projected. The classrooms we're talking about at Meadow Lane, I, I know I've read past that and looked, but I've, I've lost count, I lost track. Those classrooms is in question. Have they already been built? Are they started? Are they in the future? Where were we?
If, if you remember, we were building a new, new school with Meadow Lane, and then we came back during the middle of the process, and that was 1.4.
Yes.
Million for a new wing, which was eight additional classrooms that we added on to Meadow Lane. And the purpose of that at the time was, again, was the small classroom size, but the thought process was, if you're already out there, you've already got it designed, you've got the contractor there, it may be cheaper now to go ahead and do eight classrooms than it would be to wait, you know, two years, whenever a timeframe may be. So that was the reason for that, and then that 1.4 came off the hip of Wayne County.
So really, the question I'm asking related to that is, those classrooms, what stage are they? Where's that? That's what I'm asking. They're up, yeah. They're up and standing and ready to be used.
Well, no, they're finished. I don't know if it's not, I think they, January or first of the year, I think they're looking at opening it, last I heard.
Okay.
Take that back out.
All right. Mr. Mayo answered the question. But, too late to change.
Is my understanding that we actually went before the Government Commission, we thought, to actually get approval for us to borrow the monies to build this school?
That's correct.
Am I correct?
Right.
Now, I don't know where, where you come from, or you're a banker, but my banker turns around, and if I give a set of plans to somebody and I say, "Biker, I'm going to build this", I can't just go over there and lop off a portion of that project. "Oh, I've decided I'm going to build a garage." Well, wait a minute, he lent me the money based upon those plans. My question is, if they have lopped off Edgewood School, that's a major portion of this project, and if they did, how are they able to still use $18 billion to build the remaining when they are not building it its entirety? Number one. Number two, why are we funding the 1.4 million? Why wouldn't they use that from the savings of not building the Edgewood School? These are questions you need to get answers for.
Well, and, and at the time, they were supposed to be quote-unquote "at budget" on Meadow Lane.
Which included Edgewood.
Which included, and, and this was above and beyond the bond.
It was, but they didn't build Edgewood, the Edgewood portion.
Right.
So they got money left over.
They didn't tell you at the time that they weren't going to build Edgewood there.
Well, because at the time, they were building Edgewood. And according to the local Government Commission, we're building Edgewood, that portion in there.
At the time, and again, my understanding was, we were clear on Edgewood, we were clear on Meadow Lane, this, the extra eight classrooms was just extra eight classrooms.
It was, but at the time that we agreed to spend 1.4 million, we thought they were building Edgewood on there. So why can't they use those monies to build it and give us our 1.4 back?
The savings for Edgewood that were projected, that we were going to reduce their budget by, that 560, that, that number was based on the fact that Edgewood would be housed on-site with Meadow Lane, and that they would share facilities, such as your, your kitchen area, things like that, and that's how they would have those cost savings. So like this year, for instance, we reduced their budget for Edgewood operational expenses by half, because our understanding is that that school will be open January 1st.
If I could, also, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we budgeted actually more to the LGC for Edgewood and, no, excuse me, Meadow Lane, and then the bids came in, and we cut it by 3 million?
I think it was more like maybe the $2 million area. So we only borrowed the 16 million, so just.
Exactly what Meadow Lane was. So if there was cost savings, you know, from the budget, we didn't borrow the 18 million or, and again, I apologize if my numbers.
I know, but to be clear.
Yeah.
We want our 1.4 million back. We don't want to spend that 1.4. They need to use it from the funds they already have, since they did not build the Edgewood component. Does that make sense?
It does. And Mr. Daughery, that's the other thing I wanted to add to what you're saying, is keep in mind that the part of the agreement that was signed was that all future lottery and sales tax proceeds that were not already committed are to be reserved for debt service payments. Now, the reason I say that is because when that, when those funds are no longer sufficient to meet their debt service payments, that means the county has to jump in and meet that. That's what our agreement was. All of that to say, keep in mind that when you have, if you have a savings on Meadow Lane perhaps, you know, if, if they don't use that, you know, it, you might want, you could possibly out, reallocate it to another project, but, but we are committed to that debt service, so you may actually want to use it for the debt service payments, because eventually, that's going to come out of our pocket. And it's just something to think about, that if, when their money runs out, we pick, we pick up the bill.
I'm just saying, no one has asked the school system about how much they save by not building the Edgewood component, and who gets those savings.
Right.
I want to make sure they're not using those savings by enhancing that project, by building a huge generator that was not originally in the scope of work.
Right.
Just saying.
I understand.
Now, all the students that they was going to transfer to alleviate overcrowdedness from the southern part of the county.
Spring break, yeah.
Now, what's going to happen to those people, you know, when they change their minds a little bit, they're going to move a whole bunch of students to keep from having to build a new school in the southern part of the county?
My understanding, John, is that's still going to go. They just can't do it until the next year. They can't do it mid-year.
And if the Board is, remember, they're looking at a demographic study about where the growth is and, you know, elementary growth and, and school age growth, that's supposed to be submitted to them, I think, at the end of this month, if I'm remembering correctly.
Can I go in?
Yes, I'm sorry.
What Mr. Bell just says is correct. When, when they asked for the money for those eight classrooms, their word was, "We're going to tweak the district lines." I can't, I don't know exactly, but the word tweak was in it.
Yeah.
All right. They have been going to look at moving district lines long before that Board of Education. I mean, they've been going to look at district lines for 20 years.
Since 2002.
And, and, and it's never happened. And don't hold your breath to see if they move them this time. And I want to make a comparison, and y'all put a life at me. Dealing with them, you said we had to get some clarification. Dealing with them, and it's just like a. Dealing with them, and it's just like a NASCAR race. They change the rules every race, and that's exactly what they're doing on us.
Well, we're alive.
I hope we are. I hope Steve is right.
You just bring out the best in us.
I mean, seriously, you can't, you cannot believe what we're told.
We're alive.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Sometimes I feel like we're still in dreams.
And I know we're putting Craig on the spot, but he got to meet with these people. That one's good.
That's what I, what you pay me for.
Proceed.
Okay. Our next, our next slide, just some miscellaneous items on our proprietary and internal service funds. For our proprietary funds, EMS net is being tracked separately in our, on our books for accounting purposes, but in your report, I did present them to combine, so that you could compare from this year to last year. I did separate out net, just so that I could give you an idea operationally of what they're doing for the first quarter, and their income exceeds their expenses by about $30,600 for the first quarter. The sewer budget and expenditures, you will, if you notice in your full report, that, that increased quite a bit. That is only because we were required to move that Grantham Sewer Capital Project Fund to the sewer proprietary fund, so that increased your budget.
Another question on Grantham Sewer.
Yes, sir.
I think you said a while ago that Kendall said it was up in operational.
Correct.
So, we're not pumping it hollering anymore?
Not pumping it hollering, yes, sir.
Okay, alright. Both schools were put on the sewer.
Sir, I'm sorry.
Both schools?
Yes.
The middle school and elementary? How about EMS station?
I think the EMS station is connected.
EMS station in Grantham is also...
Yes.
The station in Grantham is on sewer, so we can quit paying rent now for sewer lines on somebody else.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I forgot about that.
Okay.
Just make sure, make sure that one doesn't slip through the cracks.
Yes, sir.
The Maxwell Center, overall, you'll see in your detailed report, the overall budgeted revenues and expenditures are down from last year. That is because the capital project fund piece is closing out, so I didn't want that to throw you off if you saw that, that large difference from this year to last year. And that is pretty much the highlights I hit on the county financials, unless there were any other questions, I'll move on to tourism.
Move to tourism.
Alright, for the Wayne County Tourism Development Authority, this is also the first quarter for them. They are on the same fiscal year as we are with the county. So, this represents two months of collections, because the tourism runs basically one month in arrears on their collections. The revenues are about 32,000 ahead of where we were last year, and we have already spent a bulk of the money, and I think you have a detailed report in your packet, but we've spent a bulk of the advertising monies upfront. I didn't want that to alarm anybody. We are watching the budget to make sure they stay within their allocated amount, and we do communicate with the city to make sure they have that same understanding, but there were some contracts that had to be paid basically right out of the gate when we opened up the year, so that is why you're seeing a large portion of those monies spent already. Your contracted services, just as a reminder, are per our agreement with the city, and that is for half of the tourism-related salaries for the City of Goldsboro employees. There are two of those employees. We did complete our 2017-2018 audit, and that was presented at our last tourism meeting. We did receive an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion you can receive, and we experienced a decrease in fund balance due to a decrease in tax revenues last year, so we were, we were a little lower than we had anticipated, but we feel like that was because of the prior year of having Hurricane Matthew. There was a lot of people staying here, a lot of teams staying here, and our revenues were up. And we will be using what available fund balance we have for this 18-19 budget. That tourism board decided that they wanted to go ahead and use those monies to put into advertising and marketing, so those have been appropriated in the budget to use for this fiscal year. Other than that, things are going pretty well with that financially, so unless you have questions.
Yes, ma'am. You said that travel tourism had two employees.
Yes, sir.
Who negotiates their salary? Does the county have any input in that?
It is.
But we're paying half of it.
We, we had this, this, there's a discussion, I think, you know, we wanted to have with the city about, you know...
You're talking that.
Who, who oversees their travel and expense, their travel and expenses, city?
City and state.
But we pay half the bill?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Well, I'm just saying, I mean, don't look at me, I didn't make that.
They monitor them, and we just pay half the bill. Isn't that nice?
You want a motion right now that we change that, that we have some input in it? Do I put that in the formal motion, Mr. Chairman?
I would ask you not to do that this time until we get a chance to talk, because we've got to sign an agreement, don't we?
We do. We do, and, and I have that too for discussion.
I was drawing my motion.
I appreciate that. But, um, Joe brought it, this, Joe brought it up the other day, and, um...
Yes.
There's, there's some other issues.
You don't want me asking questions, don't turn this down.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a question.
Okay.
And I think one of the things that this board needs to know is where we stand in regards to our portion of the tax that comes to us to offset our cost of operating the Maxwell Center.
Yes, sir.
I think we get 25%. Is that correct?
We get, we get 2% of the occupancy tax.
So, we get 2% period?
There's 6% total.
But that's not included in any of this?
That's correct. Where you will see that is in Fund 667, the Maxwell Center Fund, and I have that information. As of September 30th, we had collected 86,578.53 from City of Goldsboro for that 2%.
And, and how is that tracking on budget?
I checked that, and that's pretty close to where we are. I, I mean, this was just some estimating, but I, I kind of doubled back to see where we were with the months of our collection on tourism.
So, we're kind of on budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And we usually try to true-up with Kay Scott, the Finance Director of the city, to make sure we're matching.
And the question that I had asked you, kind of cleared it, finally cleared it in my mind, in terms of actual revenue and cost, with the addition of the occupancy tax, we're like 300,000 ahead, or?
On the Maxwell Center?
Yes.
Okay, on the Maxwell Center, I looked, I pulled...
Coming up to the good is what I'm trying to...
Right. Well, the first quarter, we've kind of, what I would say is, we've basically broken even operationally, and so, and I, and I believe that you had asked me to look at some other convention centers in the area. The only one I was able to get a response from was New Bern, and they typically operationally lose money. I believe it's to the tune of about a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, so, we're, and that's without debt service. That's, that's no debt service involved, that's just operationally. So, if we continue on this track, we're doing pretty good, because they're, they're standing on their own operationally for the first quarter.
That's, that's what I wanted in my mind.
Right. That's correct.
That's what we were doing well, and I didn't do that.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The debt service, what is, what is our yearly payment?
For the Maxwell Center?
Yeah.
The debt service for the Maxwell Center, now, let me say, this includes your ag center offices, Soul and Water, USDA, those portions.
Right.
So, it's probably about a million dollars, because you have your USDA loans in there too. However, we do receive rental income between USDA and the general fund to offset that by almost 400,000. So, if you wanted to just look at Maxwell Center, what portion of that is Maxwell Center debt, it's about 600,000. That's a real rough estimate, but...
Yeah, we're, we're almost getting to almost a year here, as soon as we can. I'd like to see what kind of projection we will be looking at as to our debt service. We might be breaking even on, on the operation of it.
Right.
But I'd like to see as soon as we can if, if we're going to have to do anything on the debt service.
Well, we did, we did have to provide a transfer into the Maxwell Center for the debt service, so when I gave you that number earlier about them breaking even, that was aside from debt service. That was just operations.
That's, that's right.
But, but I, but I think the discussion was your budget, that you fully anticipated that you would have to transfer some for the debt service, at least in the beginning years.
Yeah.
And that occupancy taxes to help offset some of that, too.
Yeah, but I'm just asking, I'd like to know how much as soon as we can.
Okay.
What, half a million?
Okay.
600, whatever, you know?
Okay. We'll probably have a better picture once we know, because he is over-collecting on some of his revenues.
Yeah.
So, we'll probably have a better idea, you know, after like six months, or, or, you know, eight months of, of what their end, year-end is going to look like, and what we would have to rely on the general fund for for this.
It's looking good as far as the budget is concerned, so far.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Alright. Oh, are you sure?
I'm done.
Okay.
I was giving you an out, you got to move it.
When the chairman says he's done, he's done.
Okay, designated commissioner is a voting delegate for the 2019 legislative goals.
I'm making a motion to the chairman to do that.
Well, it's not going to take place until, well, it'll be in January, so whoever the chairman is at that time. Don't make it on the floor, it's any discussion. Oh, as a favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, that then, the Catch a Glimpse?
Yeah, I, I did want to let you know, you remember the list that we had approved by the board on some of our legislative goals? Some of those will be incorporated as well into the overall state.
I told y'all last week, they've asked me to come up in this month, I think it's next week, I believe, to, um, to work on the goals, I'm part of that committee.
Right. So, but, but many that we have submitted will be part of, at least for discussion at the conference.
And I'll need another copy, because I don't remember what it is on there.
I'll make sure.
Okay.
Video?
Video.
You, you can run it. Yeah. Oh.
Welcome to this edition of Catch a Glimpse, produced by Wayne County Public Affairs. In October, we launched our home advertising campaign on TV, social media, radio, and billboards across Wayne County. We got the chance to sit down with Dr. Poole, the new president of the University of Mount And our wellness nurse sat down to discuss ovarian cancer. We filmed Cooking with Michelle and learned how to make cauliflower pizza. And Dr. Poole was inaugurated as the new president of the University of Mount Olive, and we were there to cover it. Our friends from the Wayne County Library in Mount Olive came in to discuss the cemetery walk for 2018. And Thomas Bailey came in to discuss the Victorian mourning event that was hosted by the Wayne County Museum. Representatives from the Small Business Administration and FEMA stopped by to discuss what people can do to apply for help through the SBA and through FEMA following Hurricane Florence. We sat down and discussed Reading Between the Wines, a fundraiser event for literacy connections of Wayne County. And produced two public service announcements, one for trick-or-treat safety for kids here in Wayne County, and another for the local option sales tax, answering common questions. Our friends at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base stopped by for another episode of From the Flight Line, where we learned all about the world of ammo. GWTA is hosting their Veterans Ride Free event, and we were able to produce a promo video for that event. Chairman Bill Pate stopped by with Shirley Edwards to discuss the local option sales tax and what it means for voters in Wayne County. As always, we produced new billboards to run here in Wayne County, and reached over 700,000 people on Facebook alone. That's a glimpse into Wayne County Public Affairs for October. We'll see you again next month.
Very good.
I'm kind of upset they didn't fit the Halloween video, but, uh...
It was a dark comedy.
It was a dark comedy.
You're right.
I got it covered earlier. I, I do want to let you know, we are working very hard on our Facilities Committee, and I appreciate the Facilities Committee, and we've still got work to do, still trying to get projects moving forward, but, but we're, they are moving forward, so that's all I have.
Alright, I'm going to stop with you, John, start down here today.
I want to mention the Facility Committee, because that's been discussed already. I did meet with them at the appropriate time. The other one I met were for the Wages Board, and, uh, right now, the wages organization is doing the weatherization for six counties over the eastern part of North Carolina, no, five counties, and have one pending. The federal government and the state of North Carolina seem to think that wages does such a good job, that they can trust them with all the grant money to handle these other additional counties. So, they're doing a good job, especially feeding our senior citizens with the meals on wheels. I forgot how many it is, but there's a whole bunch of them. So, hats off to wages.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. I do want to wish Ms. Marsha Wilson, our former clerk to the board, had a birthday, I think it was last week or so, and I just, she, she might be watching, so happy birthday, Lake Marshall. I also want to thank the News August for the coverage that they have done for the month of October for breast cancer awareness. I think every Sunday edition in October had a different story in it, and I, I want to thank them for getting the awareness out for, for breast cancer patients, and, and, for better choice of words, future patients, because this, you know, it's, it's a disease that, you know, they're, they've got a handle on it pretty good, but I just want to thank the News August for the coverage that they did on breast cancer awareness. Also, uh, we had a good presentation this morning from the, from the library. Also, the Wayne County Museum has got a exhibit in the museum now, it's been open for a couple or three weeks now, and it will go until the end of December, and it's, the focus on it, or the, the, uh, what their, their program is this time is forming in, in the past, and, you know, back 50, 60, 75 years ago. It's, it's a real good exhibit, they've, exhibit, they've done a lot of hard work on it and, and research, and, uh, and if you get a chance, and the public, if you get, get a chance, go by the, the Wayne County Museum in the old USO building, admission is free, and, uh, they, they've put on some good programs in the past. Also, today is a sad day for Wayne County, as many of you may remember, 20 years ago today is when we had the fire at Wayne Auto Savage, and we lost two volunteer firefighters that day, Robbie Blizzard and Sidney Jones, and it was 20 years ago today. It's, it's amazing how time flies, but, uh, they sacrificed their life, and they, uh, they don't know it, but they contributed a lot to the fire safety in Wayne County. At the time, we probably took a lot of things for granted, the death of those two young men opened up the eyes of the fire service in Wayne County, and, and attacking a burning building now is done entirely different now than it was then, because, you know, buildings can be built back, lives cannot be brought back, but we want to remember those two, two men that, 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 uh, that gave their life. In fact, Mr. Blizzard, Robbie, had made it out of the building, and he went back in to see if he could find Sidney, and, uh, he perished trying to save someone else. So, it's, uh, it's a sad day for Wayne County, but they contributed so much to saving the life of future firefighters. Is that pretty, pretty good? That's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dalton, all right.
I'm going to do something a little different today. I'm going to give a shout-out to someone that really has made a big mark here in Wayne County, and that's Nanette Sutton. Nanette, uh, has really taken the lead in helping us with our budget. If memory serves me, we had to budget approximately a million dollars to supplement Wayne Net's budget. budget. And I remember that because I remember years back when Wayne Net was, was a profit center, bringing in approximately a million dollars, and that's a tremendous shift. Well, it's turned this corner, and this quarter, it has showed a $30,000 profit, and we are on target to be $120,000 or more. So that's, that's, uh, over a million point one in shift from a million dollar loss to 120 profit, so Nanette, great job. I'm really concerned about our situation with our school facilities. And I, I just want to end my comments by saying that there's been a little bit of a shaking of confidence and the working relationship between these two boards, and I would urge my colleagues on the Board of Education to remedy that. They need to an- answer some questions in regards to how we have stepped up to the plate to provide the funding. We didn't ask a whole lot of questions, we tried not to get into their business, but something's wrong. If you've got a $16 million school that includes a $1 million portion that is eliminated from the plan, and yet I don't see any reduction back. Instead, they come to us and asked us to put another 1.4 million in there, when they had those funds already there, because you eliminated a portion of that project. I think that it would urge them to answer our questions, uh, so that we can restore some working relationship between the two boards. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Comer.
Yes, sir. In, in the past, uh, there have been things that, uh, I have advocated for, and, and, and I'm ready to launch on to another. I, I, I spoke about Medicaid expansion for months, and I'll take that as a defeat. That was too far away. A bridge too far, maybe we couldn't have anything about that. The flooding in the Dudley area is another situation. I ride past Dudley on the way to Mount Olive every time I come to Goldsboro, and I had the opportunity to visit with the gentleman, Mr. Pettit was here this morning, about three weeks ago, he called me and I visited him, and he rode me, he rode with me through Dudley and showed me the various and sundry places that would flood. And it, and it, and it's problematic. There's no small way to solve that problem. Now, I understand the work that the soil and waterfolk are doing, but Mr. Pettit, I think is way beyond that to be able to solve the problems out there. Uh, Ashley Smith, I believe that's her name, and Thomas from that office, I spoke to Ashley, and, and she shared with me, uh, a memo that had come from, they had been communicating, Mr. Gurley had been communicating with your John Bell, the fourth office, and I'm gonna read, I want to read this because it, it sounds like there's a possibility, but there's something in here for us. Let's say, hi, Ashley, thank you for talking to me today about the Doyle Pettit neighborhood, that's Dudley. I'm forwarding you the documentation for Mr. Doyle about the damage problem and their neighborhood, and there's a memo about that. After our conversation, I started to wonder what the total cost would be for a contractor to come in and clean out the ditches. If we could get a cost estimate from a reliable entity, in quotations, a professional environmental engineer, we could move forward, find a way to get work paid for. Now, that's coming from Mr., from Representative John Bell's office. I don't interpret that to mean that they're getting ready to write a check and send it down here, but I'm interpreting that to mean if we do something, they may do something. Might be some money up there in the federal, in the state office somewhere, in the state government that could help the Dudley area. But here's what it's gonna need from us, and I don't know where I got this figure from, but it might take about $15,000 or so to hire an environmental engineer to come in and give us a cost estimate of what it would take to clean these ditches that's causing the flooding of water to stand still when it rains, it can't drain anyplace. And so, there's a chance that of all the things that we do, and I'm putting a little bit of pressure on us, of all the things that we fund, $15,000 or so might not be money bad spent. If we can determine what it takes to drain that area of Dudley that floods so bad, and the gentleman that was here this morning, he's on his third rodeo, Floyd, Matthew, and now Florence, and I visited him in his home, and they are now living in a hotel for some extended period of time, and that drainage problem in Dudley deserves to be solved. It deserved to be solved, it deserved to be solved. If not solved, it deserved, it deserved to have a chance to be solved. And so, I'm not gonna, I, I just want to share with you all, when it comes time for my little chance, say something, I'm gonna be beating this horse, my grandson tells me I don't beat a dead horse, but I'm gonna have me a rope out there beating this horse, it deserves to be done. The second thing, and I want, I'll turn it to, if he see me going in the bad direction, I wouldn't mind him catching hold to me, but the situation with insurance companies, insurance companies in North Carolina have that paper written in a way that you have a problem and they don't have to pay you nothing. They don't have to pay you a penny. They have a clause written in there, something related to wind damage, and the way that paper looks, they got it written right side of, the 3% is written right side of your $500 to Dudley. Well, for a novice, it looks like that's what they're talking about. That's not what they're talking about. For you to get a penny, you gotta have more damage above 3% of your total value of your property. And they set, the insurance company set the value on your property. So the higher they set it, the unlikelihood that you're gonna ever get anything. But you're paying premiums on that amount up there. To me, that's not right, Mr. Boyd. And there's a, there's a term I have for, but I better not call that on TV, but there's a term for that. I'll leave it at that right now, but if not now, when? If not us, who? Thank you.
Mr. May.
I had, uh, Commissioner Comer and I sat on the DSS board, we had our, uh, DSS meeting, and, uh, we did a special presentation to, uh, all DSS employees, staff. We actually had a, passed a resolution, the DSS board, praising and congratulating our, uh, DSS employees, plus a plaque that, uh, the DSS board presented to, uh, our staff, and several of us were in attendance, Craig was there, and I believe, were you there? Yeah, yeah, you were there also. Borden was there, although he came in after the presentation. But at any rate, um, we have a lot of, we have a lot of departments in this county, and, you know, we, we should, we should give credit where credit is due, no matter what department it is. Employees can't survive off of bad news all the time, there's got to be an attaboy. I think as Commissioner Doherty says, sometimes you need to give some people an attaboy. I want to also, just popped in my mind, Commissioner Comer was talking about, uh, the flooding and drainage issues. We have that problem all over the county. I've got it in the northern part of the county, it's, it's everywhere. One of the, one of the things is that I'm running into, especially in these subdivisions, I've got, I've got two cases right now in subdivisions in my district, uh, that the DOT goes out and they're only responsible for what's on the DOT side on their right of way. What's through these subdivisions and on, on farmers' property and all that, there's no money, there's nothing there. Taxpayer money doesn't pay for this. Some counties in North Carolina have a separate tax that they tax like quarter or half cents, and it goes toward the cleanout of ditches on private property. We don't have that in Wayne County. So I've said this before and I say it again, all these ditches and unnamed streams, because we can't use this grant unless it's a named stream, is that correct? It has to have a name. But all that that we're doing is not going to solve our problem until we can get all these little small ditches that go into these streams, uh, cleaned out. I've got a neighborhood in my district that the neighborhood, the neighbors themselves, the drainage dicks going through the subdivision, over the years, people sold them, sold houses and so forth, they had a drainage dicks, actually filled it in, actually filled it in to make the backyard level. That's not our responsibility as, as, as commissioners, but we do maybe want to, maybe look in the future, at some future date, of doing like a lot of other counties are doing in the state, have, have a sales tax, for example, that goes strictly to ditch cleanup. So that's all I have to say about that.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to mention the schools just a second, whenever we were talking about while ago, I couldn't get a word in Edgewood, so I just quietly sat here and knew it'd come to me at some point in time. But, uh, Mr. Honeycutt, I'll ask you this question, if you don't know, I certainly understand, but if you'll write them down and ask, that'd be appreciative. So apparently, Edgewood School, those school kids are not going to go to the New Meadow Lane School.
And, and again, if, if I could, I mentioned this to, uh, uh, Board and why y'all were talking about the schools, we need to get a list of questions that we write down and have the chairman send a letter to their school board and get that, these answers in writing, because if, if, what, I think we're, we're getting thirty different stories, and, and I'll be very honest, I am unclear on some of the things that are, are happening at this point. If I could ask you, if you have specific questions that you would like either let me know or let Borden know, and we will put that in a letter form, and we will get those, those answers. And, and again, I, I apologize to you, Commissioner Gurley, I do not know that.
That's fine, just get your writing stick there ready and come fix and give us a question.
Yes, sir.
So apparently, they're not moving those Edgewood School students to the New Meadow Lane School.
That's my understanding.
Okay, so that wing for those kids, is it still being built?
To the standards of Edgewood, I do not know. I think the wing is still being built, but to the standards, I'm not sure.
Okay, so if Edgewood's not going there, that student population, where are they gonna go to? Because if you'll think back, when did that limited obligation bond, it was about Meadow Lane School and Southern Wayne and HVAC, never no mention of eight classrooms, which come out later, and we approved that money of 1.4 million dollars, and that's when I questioned then, all of a sudden, we had a population explosion southeast, somebody just recognized over two or three months. So somewhere, somebody was dragging feet, thinking ahead or, or something, I don't know what, what it is. So, you started out at Edgewood School at Meadow Lane, now you're talking about moving them, and eight new classrooms to relieve the pressure off the southeastern part of county where the population explosion is, and we're doing all of this and all of that before that study comes out in this month, which could be something totally different, unless they're not telling us. So, that, that's the start list, anyway.
But, but I, I would say, if, if there are those type specific questions, that, that's what we need to do, and, and I, I think there's so much change that has occurred, we just need to get it in writing so that there's clarification, um, on both sides.
Because if we're gonna be obligated for tax monies, the taxpayers need a clear explanation of why changes are happening every day, because that's what it sounds like to me every day when they come in the doors, the game plan changes, and that throws us a curve that we're trying to hit every day we can.
Mr. Chairman. Yes. Could I add something? It just popped in my mind. The other thing, the other thing that's come into play here lately is, well, if, if Carver Heights is closed, let's say it has to close, that means that we have to, we have students we got to put somewhere, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's another sticking this folks here that may, I'm hoping it doesn't happen, but there's, there's, there's a possibility that it will, and, and that's another issue here. So, you know, it looks like to me a bowl full of spaghetti right now about, really, about what the heck's going on, you know?
Reminds me of more of a soup sandwich.
Yeah, and to the questions you're just asking, you know, the K3 mandate did not go away, and you close those schools, where, how you gonna meet the mandate? You gonna be coming back to us, and us going back to the taxpayers to, to build more, I mean, just, everybody needs to get you the questions to you.
Mr. Chairman, while we're talking schools... And I was gonna mention it a while ago, and I didn't write it down, so old man forgot it. The preliminaries have been sent in to the planning department for the addition at Northwest.
Right.
The, the, it's not the, it's not the, it's just the preliminary drawings or whatever has been now.
For permitting? Yes, sir.
Well, how, how far that's gonna go, I don't know, but it, but, but that has been there.
But, but, but again, we, as we talked about before, you know, they should have the bids in from Southern Wayne Gym, you know, what, you know, Northwest, Fremont Stars, there, there's just a lot of balls up in there that we need questions, answers to.
Question for someone on the board that may remember, how many classrooms were we talking about at Northwest? Originally, we were looking at it at twenty, okay, but then, and that shift, well, well, we were looking, we were looking at twenty until they decided to divide them up, they were gonna put ten or twelve at Northwest and ten at Fremont.
I thought it was twenty-two.
Wasn't that right?
I thought it was twenty-two.
Well, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm getting at, the preliminary is for sixteen. Yes. The preliminary is for sixteen. Right. But I, I was thinking there was twenty to start with. No, Bill was right, there was twenty-two, Wayne, there was twenty-two. They decided to put, uh, twelve at Northwest, Bill, and then ten at Fremont, is that...
I think I still have the, the letter that George wrote that laid out every bit of it out.
I have that too, and I'm sure it was twenty-two total. But just for your information, preliminary is for sixteen. Well, that's what, I knew, I knew that, and...
And that's hard to believe that you're gonna get twenty-two classrooms at 4.4 million dollars of what we have.
Yeah.
But, my lifetime.
Unless you're gonna have ten at City. If I could chirp in on this to answer, or some discussion on Commissioner Gurley's comment, why would you build the wing for Edgewood if you're not going to move Edgewood there? You wouldn't.
Right.
I mean, they've already got another plan to, to move those students elsewhere. So, again, back to my point, my question is, if you're not building it, what are we doing with those leftover dollars? Those dollars need to be reverted back, or give us back at least our 1.4 million for the classrooms. You use those dollars to build the classrooms, the additional classrooms. They got a lot of, there's a lot more questions that you can write down.
It's gonna be a long letter. It's gonna be a long letter.
A long letter, okay.
All right, my turn. Any more positive basis? I know this is a little bit late getting this, but, you know, Veterans Day's coming up, everybody's getting to the Veterans Parade, is the, uh, Purple Heart Foundation sent this to us for the last, for the banquet and everything that took place at the Maxwell Center. Very nice, very nice. I didn't know it was here, but Christie finally told me that it was something in here. And, and attaboy, I'm gonna give one today, too. For five years, I've been trying to get rid of a double-wide mo-hone that was dilapidated on Sauson Road.
on Sawston Road in Andrew back there, finally got it for just Stackhouse, and we got an order to tear it down by the end of this month. That was a lot of hard work, you put a lot of work in it, too. It was a moving target, I understand, but it's just unbelievable, it took five years. And I guess I can go back to George's grill and he won't spit on my sandwich, because he's one of the neighbors over there. No, I'm kidding about that, he would never do anything like that.
I don't understand your thunder, but now that you know how, I'll make it right at you. And we're not talking about five years either.
But I, I understand, it's a difficult thing to go through to take somebody's property, because this was really in a bad place. And the lady was really nice, and there was some unfortunate things that happened in the family while they were unable to keep, keep it up. So I, I understand all that, but I'm glad that we finally got to that point.
Let me ask a question about, please. This falls on our ordinance where if, to, that falls on our.
Condemned property.
Sir?
Condemned property ordinance.
So that's the one where if two or more neighbors complain, that becomes the complaint. Although someone may be keeping the property tax paid up on something, if the property is continuing to deteriorate, so forth.
Then we go to our inspections department, and then they would take a look at it and take the approach action.
Mr. Chil, some three or four years ago, there was a neighborhood going down Old Mall Olive Highway on the right down there, it's called, I can't think of the name of it, it's one neighborhood south of Pecan Road on the right. There's a house there that you all wrote letters to the, to the address, the people live somewhere else, that house is continuing to go down. So if two or more neighbors down there wrote a letter to us.
There's several down that way that are in the.
In that, in that, more than one, yes, sir, it's more than one. So neighbors in that, people in that neighborhood could write letters and.
It's probably in the stack that we're working.
All right. That's just what I want you to refresh me again.
Your inspection department continues to write owners of property like that, so it's not, they're not brought to your attention every time something's going on continuously.
I just been the squeakiest wheel the last round. But that's all I have, anybody else got anything? We do need to go back to closed session.
I have one quick thing that I missed a while ago also. I did go over to OES when they critiqued the, when they had to critique on the, on the storm we had, and I had most of the agencies, one of the most important agencies was not there, but I won't call any agencies. But anyhow, they, they did, they did a real good job on critiquing it, and, you know, and they not only looked at what they did right, they looked at things that can be improved on. And I, you know, and I also went back when they did the, the critique, just the shelters. And one of the key players in that one was not there. But they, they've, they've really learned, you know, by having us, having a couple of storms here back to back, they have really made some improvements and, and still got some room to improve. But, but our people, department heads and the different agencies that was in there, they did, they've done a fantastic job, and then hope we don't ever need them again, but, but they've learned a lot in the last couple of years that will actually benefit, really benefit them in the future if we have another disaster.
And we're, we're working on that final after-action report, and then we'll share that with the board as well. But, but again, I appreciate Wayne for being at both meetings as well, and Wayne taught me how to still water as well, so.
Did what? Did what the ditch, dogs is, get him out.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have a little intense fellowship moment with the schools. Back in 2000, we had X number of classrooms. We built new schools, we've added on the Charles B. A. Coe, and we've done all kinds, Nor Wayne, we've added to that school. And from what I understand, we have less students today than we had back in 2000. And we're still building classrooms, new classroom, not, not replacing classroom, but Good thing for county managers to find that line on your little list that you put out. Somewhere along the line, we're gonna have to stop building classroom and get on to the era of academics. And I know that's a sore subject, and people don't like to talk about that, but I think it's ridiculous that our school systems, how many you got, 12, 13, 14, 15 schools? That's under the, making bad grades, and we still building new classrooms almost every day.
John, I'm sorry, guys, I won't hop on to that, but John, you, you have such a great point. Our children are not going to move forward just with new brick and mortar. Brick and mortar's not gonna bring our children from where they are to where they need to be. It's gonna have to be a commitment on all of our parts to put our dollars up to get in certified teachers and pay them. And, and today, I'm not talking about the supplements, I'm talking about a salary structure to bring in certified people who can make a difference in these children's lives. Right behind that, and I don't know how this will ever be cured, but you can't help the children until you help the parents. There needs to be a program developed by some brave person, it's not me, but there needs to be a plan in place for, for parents to help their children, but first, the parents have to be helped themselves. Now, a parent might be able, a lot of parents could help fix a child's costume and go to a nice party or to Halloween or the May Day exercise, but that curriculum itself is difficult. Don't let them out of food, you know? That stuff that we got by learning back there when I was in, it's not there anymore, that's not the same stuff. It's a hard curriculum out there. But you are so right, John, the brick and mortar's not gonna solve the problem for our children, it's, it's gotta be something else that we're not doing, having to do with curriculum. Thank you.
I asked Dr. Dunsmore this very question, and this, this was his answer. He said, we have classroom size, when I was in, when I went to Charles B. A. Coe, we had 35 in a classroom. Now, now we're looking down to 17. The second thing he said was, is special needs. He said, those two things have caused us to need more classrooms. That was his answer.
Gentlemen, we need to go back to closed session. Same reason, and who can make the motion.
I made the motion.
All those favorite pushers right there. Thank you.